I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We'll begin with comments from the public. I haven't seen anybody, so we'll move right into the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? It is pretty long this meeting.
If I have a question about why something I should pull it.
You should ask to pull that.
Okay, um, I would like to pull the professional appointments.
Okay. Anything else there needs to be pulled?
I guess I have a question about the announced tuition.
Okay. So we'll pull that, anything else? All right, I'm entering a motion that we approve the consent agenda consisting of the meeting minutes of December seventeenth, approval of warrants, approval of leaves, well, because there's more than one, and high school choice numbers. Thanks Brendan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, Diane, your question on professional appointment.
Is that part of the attachments that we got for said level one and level two? But when I read the contract information, it only said level one. What's level two?
I assume that level two was what she had been under because she was interim. And had the.
Oh, I see what you mean. I'm sorry, I didn't know whose contract you were under. I didn't hear the name.
There was just one.
That would be our point on.
So it's Jackie's.
It's Jackie's.
Okay, so in the, it talked about level one and level two, but the contract, it said something like level one and level two contract, but the contract itself is only level one. I assume that maybe it was because she has been under an interim contract and she's moving to a permanent contract. Is that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I didn't want to make any assumptions.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I probably shouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Keely?
My question was, I feel like in the past you've seen a comparison of the announced tuition to the prior years, so we have an understanding of the change. Especially for CTE, that's been a useful piece of information. Is that, I didn't see that information anywhere, like what it had been last year.
Um, no, but I can call that up or supply, it was seventeen five last year for CTE. And again, it's just a maximum amount because we're, many school districts right now are nearing the end of their budgeting process, so that they can warn for town meeting day, we're just at the beginning, so we're kind of using this as a spitball for maximum, but I can supply compare and contrast.
Yeah, so this is just something this state requires, but when we do the budget, we'll see what the tuition is actually likely to be.
Okay, that's what I was remembering.
Okay. So I'll enter taking a motion that we approve the professional appointment of Jackie Tolman, is that right?
Yes.
And that we approve the announced tuitions for FY twenty.
Were there other professional appointments?
There were, she pulled all of them, and so this is the other one.
So the other, right, so the second professional appointment is Darlene Murphy, temporary position, part-time position in health informatics at CTV. So, thanks Liz, makes the motion, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposing, nay. Okay, so next up is making a decision about our governance model. Brendan, this is kind of putting you on the spot, but would you mind to do a summary of where we're at at this point?
Well, I'm pretty sure we all know where we are. I mean, so we, the governance task team has made a recommendation to the full board. We've spent the better part of two and a half, three months studying the questions, looking at the research, talking about the various models. We've, thanks to Beth's help, we've provided you with a panel of people in the trenches practicing policy governance. We have provided you with an expert in policy governance to ask your questions, to get your questions answered. We've provided loads of reading material about policy governance. And the first step this board took was to have that first engagement with Val, which we had two meetings ago, where she sort of laid out for you the process of moving to policy governance, and it was an opportunity for you to ask questions of an expert in policy governance and to have a little bit of back and forth dialogue. So, I mean, you've got all the information. You've had an opportunity to learn about policy governance, and I think tonight it's an opportunity for the board to finally make a decision about whether or not to move in this direction, or whether to just move forward in some other way. So I think that's pretty much it, there's, there's no new information to provide. You've got everything you need to make a decision.
Does anyone, before we have a motion, does anyone have final questions for the task team, or anything they'd like to say?
I don't know, the only thing I wanted to say was, I think we have a lot of work to do in this district. And I'm a little concerned about the implications of how curriculum and student support and... But I did have an opportunity to read through the Winuski examples, and picked a number of those at random. So I don't see that it's gonna be a problem. I think it's really important, though, to study the policy, the governance, the specific policies individually. Make sure that they really address our needs. Outside of that, I think we can, we can go all the way through it, or partially, or whatever.
I wanted to ask you about the end of that statement, because I think we've heard that in spite of the fact that some districts have modified it, I think we had some agreement that if we're going into it, we should do it with the tone. So not pick piecemeal parts of it.
I would agree with that, but the board can always change its mind, like, different board, different members, who knows? I don't have a crystal ball in front of me to say. I believe it's a good way to go.
Okay.
But I have some reservations about the future. Go ahead.
Okay. Todd?
Just wondering, you know, the recommendation for the committee was if we decided not to go with policy governance, that we would hire a facilitator to help us look at just good governance in general. So I'm assuming those are two separate questions, that we could decide not to move forward with policy governance, and then we would still need to decide whether or not we wanted to retain someone to help us just better define good governance in general.
I wasn't, I'm looking puzzled because I thought the recommendation put a lot of onus on the board chair to figure out how to move into good governance. Did it recommend facilitation? Or I thought the facilitation was if we went to policy governance, we would hire someone to help us through the process of implementation.
This was a portion of the recommendation that Keely felt pretty strongly about, so maybe you could sort of underscore?
Right, that there's work that, as a committee, felt that the board needs to do. Stuff like identifying what policy governance would call the ends, stuff like determining, in a more formal way, how we monitor outcomes. And our recommendation was either to hire the specific VSBA consultants around policy governance, or that if we decided not to go with policy governance, it would be important to decide on a plan to move forward, probably with some sort of outside facilitating, but that you would be in charge of making that plan. So what it means is that right now we're in a position where we have one plan that it's clear what the steps are, and then one plan that we haven't made yet, because what we would be doing if we're not choosing policy governance is we're saying, we want to have more input as architects of our own plan. And it's more work for you to decide what that plan is, and we don't know what it is. So we're choosing between a very clear option that we know is designed to accomplish these outcomes, and a less clear option that we would have to take a lot of ownership for to make it achieve those outcomes. So I personally am not particularly like, policy governance sounds great to me, but at the same time, I can see why it is a very reasonable choice to make, because it's very clear what you're choosing. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but the idea is that Martha would develop a plan for us to achieve those goals that probably would involve some sort of facilitation.
I think part of putting that as.
Oh, Kim. I'm so sorry.
The alternative. If you go too far, you can't share my cough drops. So, we're trying to coordinate for a little earlier. But if, we didn't want the committee to go on endlessly because we had done the research to see what other sort of structures were there that could be captured, and in Keely's fairly exhaustive research, there wasn't the same type of supportive structure. And so we didn't want it to become the responsibility of this subcommittee to be figuring out what that is if it's not policy governance. We didn't feel we had the expertise or the, you know, that that was our charge, that was not our charge. We wanted an endpoint, we were making a recommendation on yes or no, or how we proceed with respect to governance with the available options, and that was, I think, wise for us to have included an alternative and invite that to be somebody else's responsibility. Sorry.
Okay, any other statements or comments?
I don't know, and I don't know if it's pre or post-motion, and maybe, let's see if we end up with motion, and I just wanted to sort of reflect on some thoughts I had about like current news, and if we wanted information on something like that, where would it fall if we were in policy governance or not in policy governance? And so I just, I don't know if that's.
I didn't catch information.
I was thinking about the suspension of the first grader in Cabot. And thinking about it just in context of, like, I mean, there was some comments on Digger on, you know, board roles and principal roles and superintendent roles and in all of that. It was, I was trying to think about it in context of governance, basically, and I had some curiosities.
Let's make sure everybody heard, Redd had heard.
Yeah.
Is there anyone who didn't know that? So there's an article in from that Digger last, at the end of last year, about a first grader in Cabot that was suspended from school for ten days for picture feature. And I don't want to come into the details, I just want everyone to understand what Kim is talking about. So I'd be really curious, Kim, how did you think policy governance would handle that?
So I was thinking about it honestly in the context of that data that we've talked about, the various pockets of data that we were speaking, and we talked about it over the summer, and where that data point might come in, and how we ask for it in any model of governance. It's, you know, statewide data's being reported, it's not a data point we had yet, but in context, how would it work? So I wasn't thinking necessarily about decision-making or what we would do in one version of governance or another, I was more thinking about it as a pretty critical data point, and where does it fit? Instead of just being a data point, where does it fit in context? And I was thinking about it in what we would have called treatment of students. And it would have been a data point, we would have gotten in context with other data that a superintendent would provide, that would be suspension data, you know, discipline data, like things that we've talked about. But in, I was just trying to figure out, in our role, in our hats, it's reasonable data for us to be inquiring about? And rather than off, you know, one-offs on the data we're curious about and it coming up, or even the bigger plan that we were talking about with data, it would fit in the context of why is it important? It's a matter of how students are treated. And so that was the bigger umbrella policy that I was thinking about with respect to policy governance. It just has a place, it fits, and that was what caused me to pause.
But we don't know anyway, because I don't think you can suspend a student from school for that period of time without the school board approving.
Of course, I, in our policy, I wasn't thinking about that specific instance. I was thinking, how are we doing on student discipline and suspensions and otherwise? And it's not part of, you know, a proactive expectation necessarily. We've talked about the various data points we might like. In policy governance, it would come as part of a routine reporting on treatment of students. It would, we report it to the state, so the superintendent would be reporting it to us in context, along with other data that demonstrates treatment of students and families. So I was, I was more thinking about it like that, fully understanding that obviously a ten-day suspension wouldn't happen in our district without us being made aware of it. And, you know, so I was thinking about it in a bigger picture, in a proactive way. How do we ask for that data point, which I think is important? It speaks to our vision, it speaks to a lot of things. But one-off pieces of data are hard, because we don't get the full context, or the planning, or what it tells our administration, or what it means for us with respect to investments or otherwise. So that was what caused me to think about that.
Okay. Any other comments before I ask for a motion? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
What's, to whom?
To vote on a recommendation that's presented by the committee.
So who?
No, voting on a recommendation that's presented.
No, no. Right, because the recommendation was to study. So is your motion to move to policy governance?
Yes.
Okay, so Andre makes a motion that the board move to policy governance. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposing, no. Nay. Nay. So let's raise hands, I think it's six-four. All those in favor, say aye. One, two, three. You need to, you know a lot about this. All those opposed? Okay.
Let's count.
Well, if it's five-five, it fails. So I was gonna vote no, because I'm just, I'm not there. But at the same time, if it's the difference between making or breaking a tie, I'm struggling.
Can you share my thoughts for why I voted no? I don't know if it will help anyone else or not. I just, like, I think that we could do okay in policy governance. I just think that the makeup of this board and the individuals who are on it, and how we work, I think some of us would do great in policy governance, and some of us would really not do well in policy governance at all. I think some people could go either way. I'm not terribly comfortable because of the repeated warnings that I heard where that policy governance is something that needs like a full board buy-in. And I just, me personally, you know, having worked with everyone over the years, like, I just think that there's too much disparity in how we approach that work for policy governance to be a really smooth transition for us. I think amongst the ten of us, we would have a lot of trouble with it, which is why, ultimately why I voted no. It was close for me, it really was, I think it could give us a lot of advantages, but I just, I just don't know if amongst makeup that we have here right now, that we're in a good place to transition.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Obviously, we came out in different places on this, but I think it's really dangerous to make decisions around individuals as opposed to what we strive for as a district and as a board. And we are all replaceable, we are all here. We are hoping that the people who replace us are people who have values that we share. We can't guarantee that, we, God knows we can't guarantee that the leaders share our values, that get elected to office. But I think it's our responsibility to think of ourselves beyond ourselves, and think of the board as not the personalities who are serving right now. And I agree that Keely's voice is very important in this, even though your tenure is short, because we are, we are more than the personalities that are at this table, and I think it's really important to think of it in that way.
I think we need to think of it as, will the institution of this district be in better stead with policy governance, or in better governance, for lack of a better term? Okay, there is no other term, it's just normal. So it's, it's, yes, we're replaceable, okay? But we're setting up the institution to replicate. Will things be better if it has this model of structure? Yes, I'm sitting on the fence too, but quite frankly, I'm in the structure, okay? And quite frankly, this one is structured. It lays things out exactly who's responsible for what and when. And we tailor it better to, you know, whatever details we want included or not included. So, good heavens, we're setting up government. So let's do it, okay? It's, you know, I realize that at some point in time, somebody is gonna be sitting in my chair because I won't be there. Okay, it's just the way things happen.
Yeah, I did want, go ahead, were you finished?
I'm done.
I think for me, the big thing is the, I look for stability and the comfortable feeling that we're on track with supporting our students the best way that we can, that we have. My sense is we just don't have a level of stability here. When I look at the bigger picture, we're still changing databases, changing integration of curriculum, teaching features, et cetera. There's a lot of mix. I'm looking for a little bit more stability before we step into policy governance. That's the thing that bothers me the most. On the other hand, and I did talk about it, going through those policies, I didn't see a whole lot of difference in the outcome, whether it is a procedure or whether it is policy governance. Other than the ends, I felt pretty comfortable with that. But it's just where I feel the district is today. My preference would be to hold off a little longer and look for, you know, the fact that we're on track. Everyone knows where we're going, why we're going there, we have progress, we can see the student progress moving forward. Those are the things that went into my thinking.
I guess I just wanted to reiterate that I personally, and I think this was the feeling of the committee, feel that we need to do work on our governance now.
Yes.
And that by doing that work on our governance, we will establish a firmer footing for things like data requests, and knowing where we're going, and deciding on steps to get there. So if we're not choosing policy governance, we're gonna be doing something else that takes a similar amount of work and is focused on similar goals.
Yeah.
It's not that we're gonna be putting governance changes to the side. Because that would be a drastic error, to wait until the district is like ten years old to really focus on how the district is working.
It's a tough call.
Yes, Todd?
I guess I came at it from a little different perspective. I mean, one of the things that got me interested in running for the board was governance. And as time has gone on, and that perspective has changed some, and after really digging into the portrait of a student work, I came away with the feeling that I think putting the governance thing on hold for a little bit, and really working on that work would be much more beneficial to the district as a whole, as opposed to just how we operate. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's not necessary that I'm opposed to it totally. I just think switching our focus to something like Portrait of a Graduate, figuring out what we want, and then if we did that work, and then determining the best way to govern within that sort of structure, would be a better use of our time.
It's funny that you say that, Todd, because I was actually literally just thinking exactly the same thing about the Portrait of the Graduate and helping to articulate the ends. Again, jargon-y that we wouldn't want to use, but that the structure of policy governance would lend itself so well to using that framework to establishing the ends, the outcomes we're looking for, that if we were achieving our vision, what would it look like? What do we want our students to know and be able to do? And then the rest of those policies sort of set the structures for the, like, the how, so it's like the jobs the administration does, and we just get like accountability on those things in a structured way. They don't, for me, they're not mutually exclusive, and I love the Portrait of a Graduate framework. I think that was so powerful at the conference. And I kept thinking about it, very much so in the context of using it with a facilitated structure that would give us progress, because otherwise, we create it, and then, and then how are we monitoring it? What are we doing about it? And we still need to figure that out. So if that is the piece that's governance that can wait, I think we'd probably all be disappointed if we were not hearing how we were doing with respect to movement on the goals of, you know, the Portrait of a Graduate. So for me, it's just a structure that supports how are we doing with respect to that. And I just, I don't know another, and I don't know where we get help to create that framework. But, I mean, there could very well be things to do that.
So, I agree with Kim. I think the ends policy in the Portrait of a Graduate are very, very similar and would accomplish the same thing. It's the rest of policy governance that just, I've said this before, makes my eyes lose over. But that said, it does give you a framework, a consistent framework to work. Um, but, that said, it does give you a framework, a, a consistent framework to work within. I was hoping this would be easy. I don't like, I didn't want to be the deciding vote.
Neither did I, because I feel it's inappropriate for me to make a decision for the rest of you.
Except that you're setting up a structure for the future, but, yeah.
Fair enough. You're not really the deciding vote. All of us are the deciding vote, so...
You just happened to go last.
And I mean, you didn't really even go last, you know, you said, I mean...
I was gonna vote.
Is it per person or is it the fractional voting?
Oh, good point.
So you're a half, right?
I'm a half. Martha's a half.
So if we're ha- half, then it's five-four. And it passes. Thank you. I forget.
I don't wanna be the deciding vote. But, I just, you can have any procedure you want, but that's...
No, I, I always forget that we're only at half vote. Okay, so it's five-four and it passes. Okay.
Five-four and a half.
No, if we each vote no. Right?
Right.
That's one vote, one no vote instead of two. Okay, all right. Kim?
I think that it's so close. Um, I wonder if it feels more comfortable or if it's even advisable or makes sense, and maybe it's a valid question. Can we take it to the next level of education on this? Which is beginning to look at the other policies that concern you. Because the ends policy work, the Portrait of a Graduate work, is engagement work that happens in a very fulsome way that we would be planning and getting support of, um, Voices for Education. And we would wanna, um, be thinking about that in probably like a s- maybe spring, but definitely fall. Like, there's some time before we would start being able to capture all of that data from our community. Those other policies, I believe, at least what I remember Val doing with us, was it somewhat of a blitz? Like, we looked at samples of things that are happening and what those would look like and what some of those monitoring reports look like. And we, you know, said yeah or no and we wanted to change this or add another category of this. But it started the framework. And it sounds like the part that maybe is operationally harder for people to put their head around than the idea of we want ends, we want to know what our vision looks like. What do students know and can they do when they leave us, if we're getting it right? Sounds like we're all in agreement on that. So I wonder if it's a reasonable additional investment to take the next steps with Val. This vote is close. It doesn't feel good to go five-four into something so big to me.
Yeah.
Um, and...
So, Kim, if we
I don't remember.
If we worked with Val to do all those other pieces, are you saying we could stop somewhere in the middle of that?
I don't know. I mean, if we don't buy into it, we don't buy in, like...
It seems to be her statement during her presentation.
Yeah, like, if there's a point at which this is really not for your district, I don't think we're gonna be worse off to understand why we would be monitoring treatment of students, treatment of staff, you know, financial stability or, you know, what, I forget what they're all called or... I was thinking even in looking at evaluation, I was like, um, the communication piece shows up under like policies that are in number three or something, that third category. And I was like, oh, there'd be things we'd have data on that I'm only guessing. Like, I know what Beth does, but I don't know systemically what's going on. And I was thinking about that policy in that context. So I think we would understand more about what we'd want operationally, even if we didn't stick with it. And we do some more self-evaluation, like, that's a category that we would do routinely and focus on particular areas. So, I don't think we'd be worse off, and if it's not a terrible investment of either time or resources, that we maybe consider that. Like, it's a close vote, Martha. It doesn't feel good, um,
Uh-huh.
winning five-four on, and it doesn't, it shouldn't feel like a win or lose. It feels like we are all invested in this idea of doing things differently. I just think that there's hesitance and what that is and how we do it. And I'm just not sure what our other resources are.
Right. So, I think we should move forward with the understanding that if at some point during the process, people wanna say, hey, wait, can we talk about this again? Um, that, that will do that, is that... I think that's what you're suggesting.
I think that feels better, I think.
I guess if we decide to take that approach, which I'm not against, 'cause I feel the same way that Kim does, that, um, it is pretty close and, and it, I, I would hope that if we decide to take some more baby steps, that board members go into it with an open mind, as opposed to having made their decision and then just trying to look for ways to prove their point.
Yeah.
So, um, 'cause then that won't be a good use of our time.
Oh dang it, Brendan.
I can see that happening.
Well, I can only speak for myself. I think I said before that if majority of the board wanted to do this, I would go all in and give it my best effort. Um, yeah. Do I look forward to those first pieces? Will I give it my best?
You'd be open-minded.
Yeah. Okay.
I wanna assure though, even though I was oppositional, if I was adhering to the board's decisions.
It never brought my opposition in damaging the outcome or if I was going forward with the board's decision. So I went, but you're concerned.
Yeah, I didn't mean to call anybody out. I was just...
No, no, I'm not suggesting I was called out. I'm not an anarchist, but...
I'm not what I want.
A discussion of anarchy. And Brian, thank you for getting sober that. Okay.
I think Todd.
Oh, Todd.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I took that a little personally. I think it would be on both sides. That if you come, if your vote tonight was for it and you decide that maybe you don't wanna do it, that... It's a good point, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so next up is, um, a downer review of letters sent. Pardon?
I'm sorry, I was talking to him.
Oh, okay. So, I think this, this presentation was included in our materials, though?
Yes, and I gave you one hard copy tonight. I do, um, I'm gonna stand up 'cause I feel better about presenting if I'm standing. My voice carries better since I have a hole. Um, I do apologize. On Friday, when that was sent, I was telling Al on the way in, I don't know what was on my screen. It's like somebody else had a different version and when I downloaded it, you got the older version than I had worked on for like the last two. I don't know how that happened, but when I went back to look at what I sent you, I was like, how did that hap-? That was on Sunday. So, anyways, the latest one is in your pocket and, um, on the tables too for hard copy. We don't have a big audience, but, I'm sorry.
I, I looked at it again today. The draft was still there.
It might have said the word draft, but...
So, the letters in our packet?
Yeah, in your packet, in the materials is the latest version. Yes.
Huh, if you read the materials when they first came, you, which was a long time.
Over the summer or over the weekend?
Over the weekend, yes. Yes.
So it was updated already by weekend?
Yes. Okay, why is it not?
Right, it's in math.
Now it says English.
Now it says English?
Here. I don't know what it says online.
Online, it's, the line that said math. I looked at it again to make sure that I saw.
There you go.
Anyway, so, um, in October, I had made a statement to the staff. This has also been in the Essex Reporter about our achievement gap and the belief that we owe it to our students to get better. We, we really do. We're involved at Instructional Leadership Academy. I was there today with, um, the principals that are involved in that. We believe that it's up to us for, and, and we have to do something for our students to get better. So, by the end of the presentation, this is your learning intentions and we're working on learning targets as a district as well. So I'm practicing them and using them with you. So you would know in a lesson, you're gonna have learning targets and then, um, we'll see how well we do. So to better understand the importance of reading on grade level by the end of third grade and why that's like the magic grade and why we chose that grade for our outcome. And then learn what our EWSD reading data tells us about our current reality. We're only looking at the free and reduce and the, um, race. We're not going into a lot of other data. We really use this data specifically to tell us what we need to know for our reading strategies. It is not by cohort. There's one slide that transitions into the next, which I'll tell you what is a cohort, but it also wasn't the purpose of this. We can make a lot of, um, excuses or assumptions when we look at cohort. We just wanted clear data to look by grade, by grade, by grade and not a cohort. And that's a different, when we dive into, um, working with teachers and principals, we do look at cohorts, but for different reasons. So for this purpose tonight, we did not do that. Um, and then you'll be familiar with research-based strategies that, that are known well and proven to close an achievement gap. Um, and then, and our attention, our intentions with EWSD will even come more so when we present a budget to you. So, tonight is to set you up with the data that will then, when we present the budget and you see a heavy focus on literacy, this is why. So, reading skills equals success. It's, um, it's important indicators of school success to read at the end of grade three. That is, um, scientifically researched, um, known. So, children who, um, cannot read are truly at risk. You know that. Um, academics, social, emotional, and social issues around children who specifically are poor readers. It tends, they tend to have more issues or in those areas. Children who were behind their peers in reading struggle with a low self-esteem. And as you know, as a district, we're also working with, um, social and emotional learning. It goes right along with us. Low achievement in reading is a common denominator for school discipline issues and attendance. That's something that we do wanna look at with principals too and to see how that relates in the different schools and if that is causing, um, if that's something that happens at EWSD now. But we do know that, um, we don't have a lot of dropouts at Essex High School, but nationally, that is a dropout rate, um, and then into juvenile crime. So academically, children who are not reading on grade level by the end of third grade struggle in every class from then on and the gap gets wider. So we teach pre-K to three, we teach how to read. They learn how to read. And then from four through twelve, it's you're reading to learn. And if you don't have those foundational skills, K through three, then that learning to read, I mean, the reading to learn is more difficult and your gap just grows larger. So, reading is a skill by which students get information for every content area, extracurricular, vocational pursuit that they might have. So, again, the reading really does equal success. So, Begin to Read is a, a website that, um, it tells us that the outcomes get progressively worse and it suggested that two-thirds of students who can't read by the end of fourth grade will end up in jail or welfare. That's national. Um, that's a pretty scary thought. And actually, I was just watching something on the news about that as well and stated that. Um, and the site also talks about that if a student is not reaching proficiency by the end of fourth grade, less than one in four will catch up. So, if they're not reading on grade level and we chose grade three, it's harder to catch a kid up, um, to reading on grade level. It also, the time, we've talked about this a lot in the district and at leadership team, the time that it takes to have intervention with a seventh grader compared to a first grader is much different. It'd be an intervention many more hours in seventh grade than if we catch it early in first grade. So, the adult literacy, um, fourteen percent of American, um, American adults demonstrate below basic literacy level and then twenty-nine, um, exhibit a basic reading level. Those percentages are pretty high when we think about nationally. Um, and then there is the link towards violence and, um, reading failure. I know that there's a lot of prisons that are doing a lot of literacy work now. Even literacy work, teaching, um, inmates read and how to read aloud and then bringing children in or their own children in. That's another thing I was watching on the news last night. I was like, wow, it's all fitting in. But that's teaching the inmates to read while they can share something with their families. Um, yeah, so... So the why, when we look at why do we wanna do these strategies, why are we focusing in on the literacy? So, we're going to take a look at our current reality. These charts, I could have spent a lot of time creating better charts. This is the charts that our data system gives us. It would have taken me hours and hours just to recreate them and we decided to use the ones in how we get. And this is what we look at as administrators. It's how teachers look at charts, so they're not fancy. Um, and the numbers are really tiny, but that's what comes off. And they're especially tiny when you look at this. So, in the fall, this kindergarten score, this would have been last spring, are now first graders. So when you look at that, you think eighty-nine percent, wow, are in the, are expanding. This is very different from a first grade test. So this kindergarten is, it's called Concepts of Print. So it's how they hold the book. If they hold the book right up the right side. If their finger goes from left to right when they're tracking words. If they can talk about the illustration on the page. It's linking some words with, with print, um, picking out some words. Knowing the flow of a story, being able to memorize, like, good night moon. Remember that? Like, you know, if you're a parent and you read good night moon, it's like stuck in your head. Well, that's what this is testing, is really looking to see that. So then, when you go to the first grade, the same group, you can't really compare how they were in K to going into first grade because it's a totally different task. So this is really about comprehension and understanding what's the text that's on the page and being able to determine what their reading level is. So this is our Fanta-Simpinell. The other one was as well. Um, this is our local assessment that we use. We, in the fall, we don't test kindergartners in the fall. That's why we showed you a spring from that. We test them in January and then in the spring. So, there's other, there's a pass that's used. We have that data in here, but it gets into like word count, syllable count. It's like, that's like too much in the weeds for the board. But to know, when I looked at it, I was like, wow, I was pretty impressed with our kindergartners. So that's good news. Um, and then when we look at the fall local data, this past fall, this is what, um, our first graders are doing. So fifty-seven percent, um, meeting the standards. So when I look at this, I tend to add these two and then look at below and adding those. So the fifty-seven percent meeting the standard. And remember, it's different. You can't compare those two graphs. The assessment window is right now, so our teachers are stressed because they're trying to get all the assessments done. And these assessments aren't done in a large group. It's one-on-one conversations, listening to them read and questioning. So, for younger students, it's, it takes a long time. All the Fanta-Simpinell, actually, even in fifth grade, there, it's a one-on-one assessment. So then we looked at the free and reduced. We see a gap in the free and reduced in first grade and we, as we look at that. Um, and really, when I think about it, it's sixty-four meeting and then in the free and reduced, um, it's thirty-four percent. It's almost a two-to-one ratio. So, when we look at our race, so our local assessment right now, we did not pull it out to do the different races. We just did the students of color and, and put them in one category, which is another way to look at the data. This doesn't show as much of a gap in first grade, which I thought was great. It shows more of a gap with free and reduced. We look at second. We look at second grade, all students. We have 60, I'm sorry, I'm getting a call from my mother. She fell and was in the hospital getting her shoulder. She'll have to call my husband. So 65% meeting the standard, all students for second grade in the fall. When we look at not free and reduced and free and reduced, we see the gap again. Again, for second grade, it's really, it's the 72% of not free and reduced meeting the standard and free and reduced is 39%. 61% free and reduced not meeting. 45% in the beginning levels.
Can you remind us what, what attributes a student that is on free and reduced has?
So it's those parents that fill out paperwork, right? Which is, in previous districts, I've done, sat at open houses to get parents. We do seem to have a better way to get parents to fill those, the paperwork out, but that's what determines that on the lunch. So is it, I don't remember the income, the income?
It depends upon family size.
It's the family size and your band.
So they're meeting federal eligibility for free and reduced lunch and then get identified that way to give us an indicator of their socioeconomic status.
Okay.
These numbers also with free and reduced, we do want people to fill out the paperwork, not only for their benefit, but it also means for grant monies and things. So we can get supports for students on free and reduced. Kim?
Just thinking, I'm just trying to, you know, these aren't cohorts, but is it reasonable that since the type of test is different in kindergarten, like our grade one results are really the baseline for
Yes.
reading capacity at that?
Yep. Yes.
Wanted to understand what I was seeing.
Correct. And then we look at race and again, so for white students, we see 66. For students of color, it's 57% meeting. Again, not a huge gap when we look at it that way. And that seems to change as we go up in grades. Don't have answers as to why. It's one of our questions. Why is that switching? Why is that changing? And is it the way that S-Back is given and the way that our own local data is given? So we have, we know we have some comparative to look at that up through the grades because for, we've only been looking at local assessment right now. It for, we did in the beginning of the year, but we want to compare from fall to January to see all grades in their Fanta's and Penel. We have S-Back to look at, but we want to look at growth and we bring to it, which the administrator, the administration and the teachers will do. So the fall data for grade three is the 52% and 48% not meeting standard for fall. These numbers over time have decreased for those that are meeting standard in those. So as years go on and we look at a progression, we've noticed that those meeting the standard, that percent has dropped, been going down instead of the other way. So in free and reduced, we have 57% in grade three meeting for not free and reduced and free and reduced is the 32% to 68% not. So more than half not meeting. By race, we have 51% white students, 49% not meeting. That's, that's not bad either. And then students of color are 54 and 56% not meeting. So there's not much of a gap here. Everybody needs to increase and we need to improve all with that. So as we look at performance, so when you first received this, it did say a lot of mathematics in it, but that's what's given to parents to explain proficiency levels. And then I had somebody digging deep to find the language arts one to put it on there. So that just explains the level, level one. This I will refer to at times as a scaled score. In part of the presentation, I'll talk about 33 points and the meaning of that. And that's the score that they're talking about.
So you may, you need to make clear, I think, that we've moved from Fanta's and Penel to S-Back.
Yes, now we're moving into S-Back. Yes.
Keely.
I have a question about this.
Yep.
Page. This is showing like levels one, two, three, four. The colors at the top seem to indicate people performing at those four levels. But then all the charts on the following pages only show three levels.
That's a great question because we did the same thing. Let me explain and I'll go back. So the three levels, so this is not meeting, we do not have a blue on any of these. And that was my first question when this data came out. I was like, wait a minute, we don't have any fours. So what we're doing in it is just looking at reading. So the English Language Arts has different subcategories, all right? And there's four. There's reading, there's speaking and listening, writing and, that's my other one. Oh, research and inquiry. So in some of those subsets, students can, if we looked at that, we would see some fours. In reading, we didn't see any. The percentage, there may be one or two, but it wasn't enough percentage to show on here. It's something that we called the state about because this is their data that they give to us. It's not our, it's not put into our Alpine system. It's actually right off the site. So we asked about that as well and it's because it's a subset. It's not mixed in. If we looked at overall English Language Arts scores, we would see fours.
Those who you see 33% were at four.
Yeah. Yeah, that was an example. Yeah, that wasn't our data. That was just an example of what you would see. Yes.
Previous slide where you showed before that one. That's the one where I would venture forth that one has more of a populace than the other. So with Right, in general. So with that in mind, it's suggesting that we need an across-the-board application to impact all the students?
We do need strategies that for all students, correct.
Because one is, is less of a population than the other one.
Correct.
But the other one has significant concern.
Yes, and that is why, one of the reasons why we put it into percent. So you can look at that as well. It's the percentage of students, not a number.
Right.
Okay, so now we're going to look at S-Back and just the reading subset. So we're not looking at listening and speaking or research inquiry, writing. We're focused in on, as a district, on that outcome of reading by grade three. So that's what we're going to look at here. When we start to look at this, what we've noticed is, and you can see it in so many slides, there's like a two to one ratio. It's not exactly, but as you look through it, you'll notice that for every two students that are meeting or every one student that's meeting, there's two and it's, the ratio is not good.
Right.
So we need to fix that. This is, we're through reading. We'll look through all the grade levels at the economic status and then we'll look at ethnicity and race. So the same, you can look at that, two to one. Fifth grade, same. Our sixth grade reading, still about the same. It's interesting to me because so many of these have the same level. This is a level two, so they fall within that level two. And then it's our, our end, our level ones that grow and our level threes that diminish. Same thing in grade three, I mean, grade seven. Still about that two to one ratio. Not following my notes. And then eighth grade. Looking at that, two to one meeting. So when we look at race, you're going to notice, and this is, I don't, I don't know if you noticed and you may have, and it stopped me for a while until I realized what I was looking at. So if I wanted to, I was taking that all and thinking, okay, so out of, here's, if we have 100 kids, 100 kids, that's where they would fall. But if I look at, we'll look at Hispanics, 75%. And I take these and I add them up, it's not going to add up to all that math. It's because, this is based on scaled scores. And if they were weighted, then it would go into the graph, but they're not. So this is looking at number of students and then broken down into the percents. So they, it took me a long time to wrap my head around that. So this is grade four. And we're still looking in African-American, we still in this grade and say in this third grade, we don't have meeting, even when I think about all 31%. We can, we can do better than that. Yes.
Something that I've often asked about in the past when we're talking about ways to break down this data is, as far as I can tell from looking at our schools, many of our students who are non-white are coming from like refugee families or otherwise families with like, maybe they're bilingual or maybe they were not speaking English from birth. I'm wondering if you know like what percentage of the population that is studied as non-white is also not native English speaking?
So when we look at the state that doesn't give us that, as we get into Alpine, we don't have that in Alpine yet, but we've asked that to Power School to help us to be able to look at that data so we can mix our two. We have not done that yet. And I think it's as well really important and I think about families who need translators and where are they following their students. It's not something to that detail that I would share with the board, but it is something that we know we need to look at. We were just, this is an example of what just happened with that, kind of like that, not with data, but we were looking at families who owed money to our lunch program. And we looked at the list and Jackie took it to her list of translators. And it was like, I don't know, was it like 12 students and 10 needed translators? So they weren't like getting the letter, like they weren't understanding the letter. So once they were sent out, then we were able to. But it's that same kind of thing. We need to get better at that and really looking at those families and how do we help them and then where do they fall in here?
Because we might have a completely different problem if that African-American population is all multi-generational American families versus if they just immigrated from Congo. Those are two very different issues.
But they're still our kids. Yes.
Right, different interventions.
Also, it might explain why as they get older in grade, we see a bigger divergence between white and non-white students. Because if you come here and you're in our school and you're kindergarten, then even if you aren't a native English speaker, you have a great chance for success. But as each year goes on and maybe kids are coming in at older ages without that exposure to the educational system, that would show a divergence in results.
I agree, but I also, I don't want to say make excuses. I don't want to look at that and then pose that. I want us to tackle every student.
And the data would show it.
Yep.
If we know what percentage of each of these groups is native English speakers.
Wouldn't that affect the intervention if you knew that English language learners struggled more than some of the multi-generational families?
Well, they do pick it up in the schools with interventions. Yeah.
Right. But if, but if tackling the problem, having that data then helps you choose the intervention.
Yes, and at the school level, they do. They can do that at the school level. And when they meet in their PLCs, as they meet around PLCs for intervention, they're, they're doing that. We're just not looking at that in this context. Are you noticing patterns at all as you look through these? That's grade five, grade six. We're here 100%?
Yeah.
This, it makes perfect sense because it's such a small population. If you look on every slide, all and white are almost the same number because almost all of our students identify as white.
Right. Yeah, yeah. And we cannot look at this and share with you school level because then you'd have identified students. So we can't do that. But as we look as a district, absolutely right. It still tells us we have a gap and we need to do something about our gap.
Beth? You had said you couldn't share per school and I understand. But from your eyes on the data, are there some schools that are not? I guess, is there schools that have targets that need improving or?
Um, we all need improving.
Okay.
All of them do, yes. So I can't show you like this for like
Can't show individual schools, which I respect.
Right, right. But as a district, it is good to look at and see that we have a gap. If we're working for, to close a gap, we're going to improve instruction and learning for every student.
Across the board.
Every student, that's right. When you look at a gap and try, and implement strategies for that. So this was ninth grade, 59% read at or above ninth grade level. This is our STAR data, a local data for the high school. These are not, these again, won't, they're not going to add up to 100 because it's ninth grade and below, then there's eighth grade and below. So some of these people are counted twice, do you know what I mean? Seventh grade and below. So they're not adding up to 100. It's almost like double counted. But what I look at is that 59, only 59 read at or above in ninth grade. Which differs from, this local data actually looks better than our S-Back data when we look at it at the high school level. And so at 10th grade, it's 58% read at or above. And this is 80% proficient. So, and then we started to look at students not in the ninth grade, but that are reading below the seventh grade. And there's the percentages there. So these numbers concern me and I wonder, first of all, I have a question of who? Where have they been? What's their educational track that they've been on? Were they ever identified for an IEP? Were they identified for an IEP, had support and then got off an IEP? And then where are they? So we have, when, when we developed this, this made more questions than I could possibly. It's great though. I mean, that, that's good data to look at.
Beth, do we have a couple of high school students taking the assessment seriously?
Well, that would be a good question for Laura, but we can say, and we can say that nobody takes S-Back seriously, nobody takes our local data. But to me, that's just excuses. And yes, you're always going to have a percentage of kids that work really hard on them and then no. But it still is data and it tells us something. Do you think kids take STAR?
I mean, I definitely think it depends on the kid. For me, I think, like it takes away the stress of having to do well just because it doesn't affect you personally. And, and it really depends on like that specific kids, like how well they perform under stress. But I think for the most part, kids are pretty serious about it. Like I, I just don't think people, like nobody's going to study for it is the thing.
Right, right. Well, it's getting around your reading.
Yeah, nobody's going to forcefully like do anything.
Yeah.
Right.
But do some kids say, hey, I'm just not going to do this?
I've never, I've never seen a kid just straight up not want to or, or just not do it, I guess. I've never, I've never seen a kid just straight up not want to, or, or just not do it, I guess. But I, I think for the most part, kids take it seriously.
Thanks.
I also, it takes less time to, than ASPAC, so they might also just figure they might as well do it. And in ASPAC, they might not be as in queue, because it does take a long time. Kim?
Um, like, I do, it must be one of the more startling ones, I think, with that. Um, and I just am wondering, though not on an IEP, is there any way to track, like, what their situation has been with MTSS?
Yes.
And how, it did cause me to pause and say, whether, how are we doing on MTSS? Like, we don't hear that much about it in our level, but I, you know, I'm certainly hearing about it at the state level, and certainly with the changes in Act one seventy-three, like, you know, understanding it differently. So, um, so I just, I, it, it caused me to pause and wonder.
Yes.
What else?
Absolutely. It does mean as well. And that's what I was saying before, so it made me wonder who has been IEP, what services they received beforehand. So we had some people tracking that in previous districts and some not. So we don't have a clear data now, but now we do. So we can start looking at students, like, if they went off an IEP, and now how they're doing, um, and what interventions they're getting, we're starting to align those, well, we did last year, so now we have some of that data. But it's hard for me to go back and look at a twelfth grade and to see what they got. We couldn't on an IEP, and that would be the only way that we could, not really as much for interventions. Even though I know interventions were given to students, and we had, um, systems in place, but not a way, not a way to track those. You know? And we could look past in Power School or things like that to see how they did in past in grades, more than anything else, though.
In theory, like, so just in practice, does it work that MTSS is employed at whatever level of support?
Yeah.
And then it's evaluated, and then in theory, if that's not working, it might progress to the point they end up on an IEP?
Right.
Just so I understand, is that?
Yes. Yes, it is. So the multi-tiered, um, levels of support, the most important one is that first instruction, and that's what we're really, really working on. So I have said, some people are saying like, oh, we have sixty percent of our kids in intervention. And my mouth dropped and was like, that's not intervention, that's first instruction. That's where your first intervention happens, in your classroom, and in first instruction. Then there's an intervention, and then there's the level of, um, an IEP or student support, more student support. So we have to get better at intervention, first instructions, number one, and that's what we're working on in professional development and all of that. That's a reason for our new professional growth model, it's the reason why principals are in Instructional Leadership Academy, why we're learning feedback to give to teachers, it's about first instruction. The next level of support that we really need to get, so it's systemic across the district, is on intervention. So we have a group of, um, teachers, teacher leaders and administrators going to Houston to, we're in Solution Tree, that's the company that does the professional learning communities. They also have a piece that, um, that responds to the intervention. So we have a group of people that are going to that to learn about it, to see if that's what that next step is for us. So our plan in our CIP is to develop what our intervention system looks like. And right now, it's taking a smaller group before we add everybody into it. Um, I really charged Jackie and Erin and Dylan with that, um, and that, this is one of their pieces. Dylan and Jackie are going with a group of people to look at that next step for intervention. It's really about first instruction. We can't have so many kids in intervention. Yes. Brendan?
I don't know if this is a fair question, but how, how is a student allowed to matriculate to the twelfth grade when they can't read above a seventh grade instruction level? Like, what?
Not on an IEP.
How, yeah, how do they get to the twelfth grade?
That's a really good question. That's a good question, I mean, that's, those are the questions we're asking.
Would proficiency-based learning change some of that?
I don't think so, we'll still, well, we'll still know this, because we'll still do STAR.
No, I'm saying.
For the progressing through grades.
Right.
I don't think so, right off, I would say that would be the way, ten years down the road. And you move, like, that would be amazing if we had a system that when you were ready and progressed, you moved. Like, we didn't even have like grades, but you moved to the next level. That's a societal change.
Big picture, we like big pictures.
This, um, was really intriguing to me as we looked at it. So when we thought about those, they were the two thousand numbers, and we talked about scale score, and I said to you, I'm gonna come back to this. When you, when a student makes in a pro- progress from fourth grade to fifth grade, if they make thirty-three points in their scaled score, that means they've had a year's worth of growth. So, and that's in the subset, so if we're talking about, this is about reading, so if we look at, no, this is ELA altogether, but you can look at it in reading, you can break it down into the listening and speaking, so you can see where the progress. This is overall in the English language learning, so we don't have third grade data, this is the first year that they took it. So this is growth from third to fourth grade. The green is sixty-five percent, met that one year's growth. Uh, I have looked at worst data, but I still think this can be better. And then fifth grade is sixty percent, sixth grade is forty percent, seventh grade, this is, what's happening? We went to fifty-five. Why is that happening? This is another one that left me with more, or all of us with more questions. Um, what's going on with eighth grade? What's going on with ninth grade? I do believe that the work we're doing around essential standards and that viable curriculum will help this. So that we are, um, those essential standards that everybody is teaching what a fifth grader needs to learn. And we're all consistent in all the fifth grades across the district. So when I see this jump and then that, I think, is that the transition from middle school to high school? What's going on? Is it the, um, I know the language arts, the two different schools, they haven't done a lot of collaborating this year, even the last year, we said we were collaborating, much more work and deeper work this year, it, that really progressed. So that's that common language, common curriculum that I think, um, well, research says that will help with that. I also, um, so it's that essential standard work, and then, um, it's just interesting data to look over time.
I mean, this, I was disturbed reading this information.
Yeah. Actually, I'm glad that you're disturbed, cause I am too.
I've been disturbed about, a lot about this information for the last forty years. But, so my question is, is you've got the eighth grade cohort and the ninth grade cohort. The only way that's really gonna see if these guys are progressing is when that current ninth, that current eighth grade becomes ninth grade next year, have they?
Yes, right.
Improved?
Yes.
So we don't have that at this point in time.
We don't. We could look at it next fall.
Okay.
And this is actually newer to us, the state started with this data not to, uh, it, last year might have been the first year that we could see this growth and really, and that this became consistent. When I was a curriculum director before, um, I came here, curriculum and superintendent, we didn't know that thirty-three points. It varied between grades. So now that's consistent, which is really helpful. Cause before you were looking at, oh, wait a minute, what grade am I in? What subject am I in? Oh, but this person made, now it's just a clear cut. So that's been really helpful to look at. It is disturbing data. Absolutely. Yeah. And we, uh, we agree, and we're working towards it. So what our data tells us, we have an achievement gap for those not on free and reduced lunch, and those that are on free and reduced. We have an achievement gap between our white students and our students of color. We have difference in achievements and inconsistent growth across the grade levels, which you just, that showed you. The achievement gap for some groups of students is greater than two to one. Our students are not meeting growth targets. Our gaps grow as students progress through our schools. And we've not built a strong foundation that allows all of our students to be independent and read to learn. And this is the statement that I started to talk to you about in the beginning, when I said, in the early grades, we teach students, um, to read, and then all of a sudden, it switches into the reading to learn. And I, I was guilty of it as well, I mean, I taught third grade for many, many years. I moved to fifth and thought, hey, these kids know, you know how to read, and here's more information, and do some research, and here's inquiry, and get out there and read, the more you read, the better you, I would go back and do that totally different. So, the more we know. You know, it's one of those things too, right? We, the more we know, and that's, that's, that's what's happening. We start, we keep getting more and more research, and we keep learning more. So the research says about learning to read, children have difficulty, if they have difficulty in any one or more of the areas for successful reading, these difficulties can change over time. The areas, um, they're important to read development, so are the phonemic awareness, which you have had a member of the public come to talk to you about. I am like cheering her on, like, that's amazing that she's focused on that. This is that phonemic awareness is what we need to focus on, we got very far away from it. In teacher prep school, we learn a lot about comprehension and how to teach vocabulary, reading behaviors. You go into a classroom, and it's amazing with reading behaviors. They understand them, they know them, they know how to open the book, where to start, what does reading behavior look like? Are you using sticky notes? Are you questioning yourself? Are you self-regulating? Those are amazing. And then reading engagement, we have a lot of kids, that would be interesting to survey all kids, to see if they're engaged in reading, or are they doing it, you know, just, when we do walkthroughs, we look for that. Are they engaged in reading, or are they just sitting there with a book open? So, but that phonemic awareness is something that a lot of teachers don't get in teacher prep school. And they've gone, it went from like one end of the spectrum to the other about comprehension. So when I went to college, we learned, all of us, I learned about phonemic awareness when I started to do some reading recovery training, um, and then went to math recovery, cause the reading was like, there's too many, that's, that's a lot. But, we need to teach it. It's when a teacher sits with their student and does a running record, and that, if they can know phonemic awareness, they can help translate that into what that student needs to know. If you don't have that knowledge, it's really hard to do. That's all the rhyming that K kids need to do. There was a, just a large segment on WCAX, and Hiawatha was mentioned. That, that was all about phonemic awareness in the Stern Center and the professional development that they're doing. Skilled reading is more than reading words correctly, which is a lot. The reader must make sense of the text, read the words, and confirm and build background knowledge about the world. Not just reading words on the page. So this is why we are focused on third grade. A student who can't read at grade level by third grade is four times less likely to graduate. Now, that's national survey, again, I said to you, we do graduate, we don't do that, but when you look at those scores, those are the kids that we're letting graduate. You know, a sixth grade, they write the newspaper at sixth grade level. Some of our kids wouldn't be able to read that. So we are focusing heavily on third grade. It's not an easy goal to have, um, everyone read the end of third grade on level. But achieving the goal requires a long commitment and effort, systemic realignment of school assessments, which we're doing, our curriculum is about those essential standards. We're looking at instructional time, we're doing instructional leadership and walking through and looking at, Jackie's working a lot with the K five principles, and what does a reading lesson look like? What is that time when you're in a classroom? What are you looking for? How are you looking for phonemic awareness? How are you looking for comprehension? All of the five, not just, um, comprehension, or some strategies that people are using of those reading behaviors, about what are we looking for? And then, given the complex nature of achievement gaps, closing the gaps is one of the most persistent, significant challenges in American education today. It's good to know we're not alone. So how do you close the gap, get the Y in here somehow? The most important thing, and I've talked to you about that, is the first instruction, that quality first instruction. It's, um, we have to have the belief that all students receive access to effective core instruction, not first instruction. It's comprehensive, includes teaching phonemic awareness and phonics, language development, writing, spelling, comprehension. Does not focus on any of these areas, so if you don't focus on one of those areas, our kids aren't having as success as they could, if they're focused on all. So, and the Stern Center with Hiawatha has really focused on that, and the teachers are like, wow, they have tools in their pockets now. They're really feeling good about their reading lessons. They don't have as many kids going out to intervention, because they know what to do, and that's a good feeling as a teacher, when we have the tools. Uh, effective reading instruction, use a large variety of flexible range of instructional strategies, and includes teacher-directed as well as independent work, working in small groups and large groups, um, one-on-one. All of that needs to be flexible, and that need doesn't stop at third grade, that needs to continue right up through. High school's a little different in how reading is taught, or not taught. And then focuses on both the student's strengths and the needs. So coaching is a research strategy to help close the gap. The thing about coaching, um, when I talk about coaching, I think about a teacher leader who is extremely flexible, understands good instruction, best practices, is able to work alongside of a teacher and really see growth and help promote growth. These are all the reasons why coaching is the best, one of the best things to do. So we can send a teacher off to a workshop and come back. I did this many times, I was all excited about the workshop and something learned, I knew, but I'd be the only one that was that excited, and all of a sudden, the binder or the worksheets are up on a shelf, and it's done. But if you have a coach in the system who's constantly coming in your classroom, working with you, you think about, um, professional athletes, they have coaches. Um, and you think about an independent person like a Tiger Woods, they have, he's a coach. So coaching is really important, and we learned today, I'm not gonna get the quote right, cause it was just this afternoon. It doesn't mean you're a bad teacher to have a coach, it means you wanna get better. And I think that that's really something, we talked about it as a team today, in Instructional Leadership Academy, and that's really something that we need to foster, um, to do. So we believe coaching helps, we right now have two literacy coach, coaches for, um, ten schools. Data-making decisions, this is what our professional learning communities will be doing. Some do already at the school level right now, when they look at data, and, um, I was just talking to Brendan about, that then they know what to do for intervention when they look at their data. But it's definitely, um, collaborative to sit down with teachers and do that. This is a big change from what teachers did even ten years ago. They, teaching was a, used to be a very private profession. You got in your classroom, they were your kids, you moved through the curriculum, you shut the door, you loved your kids. You didn't have to real, you know, the principal would come in and say, oh, good job, good job, good job. And you didn't grow unless you went somewhere to grow. Now, being more collaborative, your peers, you have peer pressure, you wanna do well, because your colleagues are asking you to do well. So, and looking at data really opens the door to that. I have a class, Diane has a class, and Keely has a class, and I'm bringing student work. And I look at Keely's, and her kids are doing so much better than mine, and Diane's are doing better than mine, what does that say about me? That's that collaborative work that needs to be done, and that's what happens in professional learning communities, when we get to that point. But that's looking at data. We've opened up our data, so people can see, um, the race data and who's on free and reduced lunch, which is really important to be able to look at that, it wasn't always, um, that way, but now teachers can see that. Professional learning communities, that culture is a way to close the achievement gap, you know we're doing that. Members of a PLC consistently turn their learning and insights into action. They recognize the importance of engagement and experience in learning, and in testing new ideas they learn by doing. That commitment, as a district, we're really committed to PLCs, and it's a known, um, research strategy to close the gap. Here's some other ones that don't fit into a. Here's some other ones that don't fit into a, the other categories, but it's aligning the district, which does fit into the PLCs. But it's aligning essential standards so that that's that viable curriculum. We, um, build capacity for principals as instructional leaders. The, we know we have inequities and we need to address them. We have to as a district value teaching and we have to value teaching, learning, um, teacher learning. So, and I, I think we do with professional development, but I, I think we need to be more specific about that teacher learning and what, um, the direction that we're going in with like phonemic awareness in the younger grades. So if that's what we're saying and we're seeing all this research that's proving that's helping, then we need to commit to the teacher learning in the low grades around phonemic awareness. Hasn't been out there. It hasn't been, hasn't really been done, except for special educators. They're not the only kids that need that. Now we're seeing that everybody does. Redesigning schools to create time for collaboration, which we have done through our scheduling. Create meaningful teacher evaluations that foster improvement. To foster improvement, it's the feedback loop, which is now in our professional, um, growth model. And then addressing social and emotional learning increases the capacity for students to access learning. Another, um, that we've taken on as BWSD with our coaches and our work at each of the schools. And then collective efficacy is the sense among a group of members that they have the capability to organize, execute the actions and require to achieve their most important goals. So we follow, um, our leaders are really into researcher, um, John Hattie. And I, I've talked about him here before, but John Hattie has 189 strategies that he's labeled, um, and put into most effective. So he says that the average effect size, which the effect size doesn't really relate to anything, is point four. Teacher efficacy is the top of his list. So if you think of point four as average. Teacher efficacy comes at 1.57. That is like the highest, most, this is all for student achievement. So how do we get students to achieve? Teacher efficacy is at that top. So it's us believing in each other, believing in our teachers, believing in teaching and learning. And having the faith that we're going to close the gap and, um, teachers, coaching other teachers and not blaming anybody, but really believing in each other and believing in our students that will do it. And that's number one. So. So this relates to, we are really aligning our work with those, um, research-based strategies to help close our gap. We've done a lot of work, we've talked a lot about it, we know what closes the achievement gap, we just have to choose some. So you'll see, um, those strategies that will reflect in our, um, the 21 year, 21 budget proposal. Um, and then we have two instructional ones that are coming up after the next one, right? So it's the, yeah. That will show why this data was important for you to look at.
Questions for, um, Kim?
I'm thinking about the aligning standards and
Yeah.
And is that something that's happening like directly by our teachers? Is there a quicker way to that end? Is there like something you can buy? I understand that that doesn't provide teacher buy-in.
Yeah.
And that is not the ideal. I'm just, I'm just wondering.
There are things out there that you can say, yes, we'll grab those as our standards. Um, the professional learning communities believe in that each community is different. So we might be different than, you know, a Chicago community that listed theirs as their, um, standards that are most important in their viable curriculum. So when you do that, you're looking at your own data, you're looking at the needs of the students in your school. So if we set essential standards and say all our third graders in EWSD will learn this. And it's a minimum. You can teach other things, but these are like, gosh darn it, this kid's going to learn it, right? So you just stick to it and you do intervention, you do everything you can to help. And there's like five in the reading. I don't believe you're great team, that's why I keep using that. So we might develop those as a district and Hiawatha might have a group or summit or Westford might have a group come in that needs something else. Adopt another standard and say, this is essential for this time, but you're not going to forget about those district-wide ones. So yes, you can go out and buy it, but it's not tailored to the individual schools or needs in your school.
So the curriculum exists, the viable curriculum exists, it's somewhere.
So we have the core standards, the common core, which then we're pulling off. Right. So this year we've worked, um, I think probably one more PLC session, which is in, in two Tuesdays. We will work and everybody will have their literacy essential standards done. So we've worked this fall to do that. And then we dive into math. The math will be much quicker because we went through the learning process of developing the reading ones.
So again, not being an educator, just I want to make sure I get it. So there's common core and from that we have a curriculum that is an EWSD curriculum that achieves the common core standards.
Yes.
From the curriculum, there are essential standards by grade. Yes, in each area?
Kind of flipped. So we have our common core, which is, I don't even remember the number of standards. It's like outrageous. Like we couldn't teach them all in one year. We'd have to keep your kid in a first grade classroom for two years to teach all the standards. So what the research says is then you pull out those that are most essential. You do not want a kid to leave first grade to go to second grade without knowing this. So it, they're viable, they're, um, they translate from subject to subject. So there's all this, these steps that you walk them through to make sure that they're the essential ones. From the essential ones, then you can develop a curriculum. But the curriculum that we're talking about is more units that meet those standards. So when we taught, we use bridges. People confuse, uh, bridges is a program, a math program. Many people will say, oh, that's our curriculum. That's not a curriculum. That's a program. That's a resource. We should not rely heavily on that. When we develop our essential standards for mathematics, the teachers are going to have to go look at bridges and see, okay, so what units in there? Most important. And it might be, I mean, I think geometry is really important, but it might be something else takes the priority to that. And geometry is a nice thing to know, we're going to teach it, but we're not going to make every kid learn blah, 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 blah in fifth grade in geometry.
And so
Doesn't mean it's not taught.
I just, again, I don't mean, I
No, 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 good questions.
The, so let's, it's by grade level.
Yeah.
And you're saying that they're going to be finished in the fall or something, or are they finished up in the fall?
Uh, we're just finishing up literacy and then we dive into mathematics.
Okay. And then those standards are the standards, not just for a year. They're the standards until there's a reason to change them.
Yeah.
Okay. So they are like going to check it off. They got the reading ones done. If, what if?
Sequence that, um, add assessments.
I'm thinking if that's a fourth grade deciding it or a fifth grade deciding it and an extreme example decides not to do cover whatever the appropriate third or fourth grade version of geometry is. But geometry is going to be important. Like how, how is that sequenced to ensure
Good question.
That these are not happening in
Yeah. So in February, Jackie will gather teacher leaders and some administrators and do a vertical alignment with the PLC leaders. Um, and then that'll make sure that there's not gaps in what we think is essential. And those can change too. If I'm teaching I think, you know what, this has really changed our thinking because our fifth graders aren't doing well in this, you can create a new, you can pull in a new essential standard. It just means when you teach an essential standard, if a child doesn't get it and you've done your own intervention as a teacher and you've done everything you can and you bring your data to your PLC and say, okay, I can't, I don't know what else to do and I've done this, this and this, and this is still where the child is. Then an intervention can pick up. But an intervention doesn't have to pick up for every single thing that's taught, just for the essential standards. And that will hone in our interventions.
Thank you. Yeah, much.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you, Al.
I, I really I really appreciate the detail. We had talked, worked on these standards for a while. I've been looking at this data for 15 to 20 years. And focusing in on the not proficient and determining how this occurs. I don't think we've really done that kind of work before. So what I see here is nothing new.
Yeah.
This is going on for years across all grades. And the, the main reason for focusing in this area for myself has been just the, the human capital that is not achieving the best. We can do better. And so I've worked pretty hard on that. I look at this as a systemic failure across the system. And some of the things that I have come across, uh, there's, there just seems to be once students get behind, they stay behind. And it just propagates through the system. So there's apparently a lack, not only of remedial programs, but intervention strategies that enable this to be addressed at the beginning. So I had a couple of suggestions. Just for all these years, for what it's worth. First one has to do with the fact that teachers know when students have deficiencies. They're the first line and they know. So the first thing I would look at is identifying that specific deficiency. And not only trying to address it at the school level, but identifying and specifically communicating with the parents, the specific deficiency. To bring as many stakeholders to bear on the needs of the student. So that, because you, you just can't do this without the family involvement, students' involvement and the rest of the teaching staff. The second piece of this is priorities. And I think that priority has to be K to five. Not K to 12. We, we just simply may not have the resources to identify this. But I know one thing that has worked for me is to establish, if I don't know which way is the optimum way, and a series of pilots that determine the maximum effectiveness across the broad, the broader group. One solution may not be the answer to this.
Yeah.
And there are different groupings that may need or more or less emphasis in certain areas. So this identification of the needs is the most important thing. Two other points, we have enrichment for students that are really outperforming. We probably need a lot of enrichment for the other, the other end, the students in need. I don't think we have that.
Well, we call it intervention time. So a lot of schools have adopted what I need, it's called the win. So that's new in the past couple of years, that. So students are getting like what they need in that subject area.
Okay.
So that covers both ends.
So if we're going to go take off, we're going to assign, we're, we're going to assign a pile, a pot of taxpayer money to support this. Then I think it's really important and honest to our public to have progress feedback
Yeah.
on the effectiveness of this change so that we can go out as board members and at least explain why and what we're doing and have that accountability piece coming back from the administration.
Yeah. And also, Al, while you're talking, I was thinking about, it takes some courageous conversations to have this with, um, staff and with principals. I mean, Brian was there when we first looked at this with principals. It was, you could have heard Penny drop.
Well, this is something we need to do. This is a must-do
Yeah.
Need and it has to be addressed. And I'd like to see it addressed. If, if there's a problem in the district with people that can't support the initiative, then that's your prerogative to handle that.
You know, I was thinking about the recent visit with our legislators. And besides, as a board, I'm trying to think of like, what can we do as a board about this? And obviously we can support investments in the plan of attack that has been developed. I think the other thing we can do, since poverty is such a significant factor in this issue, we can ask legislators and local officials to support public policy that works to reduce poverty. Those are the, I mean, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think we could do as board members. Because since we know poverty has such a significant impact on this gap, that if we can, as a society, if we can work to reduce poverty, that will help and not, it feels like there's a huge burden on our schools to fix this problem. When we know poverty and societal poverty plays such a huge role, it's our obligation as board members to support public, public policy that will reduce poverty in our community.
It's also what Kim brought up with legislators is that mental health and who, because that has a big factor in this as well.
The, the, uh, the last point I would make is there is a, um, the hardest pill I've had to swallow in all these years was the one, was a frank discussion with Jack Ballendorf, great guy, and myself with a highly professional administrator. And it was shocking when we took some of the data, the not proficient data and had the numbers by grade. Over five years ago, we took that to this professional. And the response was, it's just the way it always has been and the way it will always will be. And that was so discouraging to hear that. But this person, this board member has never given up on trying to close this gap. This gap is important and it's important to a lot of kids and a lot of families and how they go on in life. So I think we need to support it.
But I, I would say as someone who's been on this whole I personally have never been an administrator that wasn't trying to close this gap. It's, you said, it's very, very difficult.
Right.
And the strategy that works for one kid isn't necessarily a perfect next. And it's usually many more than one specific strategy. There are so many things that have to be worked on. I commend you for this focus. And, you know, some schools get it done, but it's rare.
Yeah. We will.
We welcome it.
I hope so. Kim?
I have a dead close advocate thing and I'm just a product question, but I am a big fan of PLCs and appreciative that it doesn't happen overnight, that advocacy piece
Yeah.
doesn't become productive and turn into results immediately. Is there any linear link to the decline in achievement for the reduction in instruction time? Is, is that at all a thing?
No, but actually, you know, when you go to solution tree and they talk about time for professional learning communities, it makes such a gain in the actual instruction time than that, missing that is not, there's not.
So there's not, like it just, these results this year are so startling and they're coming off of, you know, like year
Oh, yeah. And that's, well, yes, when you link it that way, that's a great question. Um,
So it's a curiosity.
Yeah.
It's not a indictment, it's just, I, I think it's a curiosity worth exploring for people
Yeah.
less inclined to be supportive of PLCs.
Right.
I think it's reasonable to explore that.
Yeah. Well, when you look at 90, 90, 90 schools, they take time with their PLCs, a dedicated afternoon. A lot of schools do a lot more time, a full half day. If we want to look at teachers collaborating in the time that kids are in school in Japan and the amount of time and the amount of time that they spend collaborating, creating, planning, looking at data, and the amount of time that kids are in school, that they outperform what gets.
So I was just more specific to our data, curious. So I, I'll just, but then.
It's interesting to track that, though, and see.
Yeah, I think, my bigger question, and I'm really appreciative of understanding the importance of getting the third grade literacy right and not losing ground over time. I'm really super sensitive to what our educators four through twelve are doing
Yeah.
to address the concerns of those that are not on grade level and how to get them there. And whether that is a resource investment or a redirection of the attention to the matter. Or I don't know if collectively our educators, let's say in the high school, are aware of those overall average results.
That's a good question.
I mean, it is startling.
Yeah.
And if you're aware of it, you become more in tune to it and maybe you're looking for it more. So at some point, it will be helpful, I think, to hear an articulated plan for those who are sort of outside of that intense focus around third grade literacy for how to be improving on their instruction, because we have a lot more kids outside of that grade range that need help now.
Yeah.
So thank you for whatever you can do to help inform us on that as well.
Okay, I'll take one more then. I'm conscious of that.
Um, you probably aren't allowed, but I, I'm curious as to whether any of the demographics or societal issues surrounding the families are, I'm sure they play a role. Because the length of time that I've been on the board, I've seen a lot of changes that impact the dynamics of family. Um, you've had poverty is one, you've had deployments, um, you've had income loss, et cetera, et cetera. But the data probably is not, probably cannot dwell into that.
Yeah, that's a hard one to do, but I know that one of the reasons for our social learning work is because of that.
These various.
In that, in that sense, I suspect will also impact student achievements.
Absolutely.
Taking away whether they're poverty or non-poverty, or Caucasian or of color. I think those are also contributors, and I would be curious as to what segment of the population is in that, those categories and therefore impact.
Nail down to tell you that, yeah.
Thank you.
We're cautious of that.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks. Okay, Laura, you seem to be by yourself today. Where's Tilly?
Uh, she's in India for.
Oh, did her grand. So are you ready to take it all by yourself?
Uh, yeah, for a little bit at least. Um, we, I'm meeting with Beth and Kim and Liz on January fourteenth, and we're gonna talk about, um, uh, our meeting with the middle school principals. And we have meetings with students in early February. And I, I'm not sure if Tilly will be back for that.
She will be.
She will? Okay. Um, so, uh, we're gonna talk with Beth about like how that meeting with the principals is gonna look like. And, um, kind of what we're hoping to get from that in terms of collaboration. And, um, during the meeting with the principals, we're talking about like how to approach meetings with the students. And we, Tilly and I had, um, a conversation draft of kind of questions uh, that we wanna ask the students, and so we're gonna work with the, uh, principals on what kind of questions they think would be beneficial and how can we change them to kind of direct the conversation, um, in a meaningful way. And then, once we have those meetings, we will, um, bring them back here to talk about.
Okay, great. So are you still connected to the issues group of the student government at the high school, too?
Um, yes, this year we decided to kind of focus on middle schools more.
Okay.
Um, Tilly is still in student gov, and I'm not sure if they have any specific issues right now that would concern the board. Um, but we can definitely look at that. I know that we're trying to focus more on middle schools.
Okay, good. Questions for Laura? All right, we'll, look forward to your continued progress. Okay, testing updates, Liz?
Uh, we have our meeting on Thursday morning for our planning for the year. We, I wanted, you all got an invitation to the community dinner on Saturday night. I wanted to, uh, again invite you all and our viewing audience. Free community dinner, um, lots of sponsors, lots of information on the EWSD website about it. But the intention is just to gather and be. There's no agenda, there's no facilitation, there's no presentation. Um, we really are trying to have five hundred people show up and really just have an opportunity to connect the Essex Westford, um, school district with the Essex Westford communities and try to celebrate. So please join us if you can. Invite anybody who you can think of to come. Activities for kids and adults, and starting at four thirty on Saturday. So we hope to see you all there. And the other piece of, um, information is that the, as you know, Voices for Education, uh, took two different directions. One of them is more of a supportive role, as the presentation from last meeting. The other is the community group. That's the Equity, Essex, Essex Equity Committee. That's being led, co-led by Erin McGuire and Karen Dolan from the Community Justice Center. They are meeting right now, or they're probably done by now, but, um, um, I did stop by there on the way here tonight, and there were, um, I don't know, maybe a dozen people in the room and, and really doing great work to, to further that goal of having the community involved in, um, issues of racial and social justice. And, um, so they are, they are, they, their minutes are documented, and I'll share them with you as, as we move forward. They're planning an event in January. They're working out those details tonight. And I will report back to you what they come up with. And kudos to, to them to keep, for the work that they're doing and for keeping this, this work going. So any questions about that or anything else, just let me know.
Questions?
As a part of the Communications Committee work, we have a number of board meetings related to the budget. And the first question has to do, was what is the plan to inform the public of our various meetings and the topics they're on?
Well, they're posted everywhere. So it's on the website, it's all over, um, and it's, and Ben is posting it on social media. And all of the topics that we see in our package are, are public through our, um, for, through, um, our social media and through our websites. We have submitted twice to the Essex Reporter, articles twice that have not been printed. It's not up to us. And we can only keep resubmitting, which we have now done for the third time with information about our upcoming budget sessions in the Essex Reporter. The other way to do that is to submit a letter to the editor, which you're welcome to do. I would suggest going through Martha. Um, um, to, for, um, is that, does that sound right? I don't, we can't all write a letter to the editor. That's not how we communicate. Our, our letters generally either are signed by Martha or it's a board letter. The, the, the request for an article is just entirely up to the reporter. We can't, we can only do what we can. And the same is true of, of letters to the editor. But if we want, as a board, to submit, uh, something around that, Martha, that might be something we could try in addition to trying to get a piece which we haven't been able to do.
You know, I, I think the dates and the subjects.
So I can do, that's easy enough to do. I did submit your article to the Westford newsletter, so it's been published there.
Great, that's great. And it is all over the website. And on Front Porch Forum, yeah.
Oh, very good.
Will they do the, um, the calendar events or whatever for the meeting topic?
Yeah, so it says, you know, it's, the description that you see in, that we saw in our board notes, that's what's gone out. So it shows people what, what the topic is for each of the upcoming meetings.
Essex Reporter, you know, I'm thinking, if they're not, the calendar thing versus.
Oh, I, we, Ben and I send it to both things. So the, the budget meetings are actually on the calendar. They're on the calendar on the website, of course. So you can look there. They also are submitted to the reporter for that calendar of the upcoming budget sessions. Um, so you can look in there and, um, and find it that way as well.
Second point.
Yeah.
Is the board gonna have an opportunity to look at the way the, the budget information is presented to our taxpayers, voters? And can we look, is the board have an opportunity to look at it prior to going to publishing?
You could attend the communications meetings where we work that up.
That's where it went.
Yeah.
Communications committee typically, but Ben puts it together, communications committee.
And we do bring it to the board every year before it gets published. We've never put anything out for mass consumption without going through the board, ever.
I mean, we don't approve it. I don't believe it.
No, but we made suggestions on the format, and we presented a draft to say, does everybody down with this? But the work, as Keely is saying, does get done at the communications, um, meeting. So you're welcome to attend them or to submit to me comments for us to consider, which you did last year, and we did consider. And we are happy to take comments for those meetings while we figure that out. Ben comes to all of those meetings as well.
Okay. Anything, uh, do we have any negotiations update?
No, maybe can, um, next, a week from, is it, is this coming Monday?
Yeah.
In the afternoon with the teachers. Um, there's also this Thursday, for anybody interested, I think, a, the SBA, um,
What?
webinar on negotiations.
I thought it was supposed to be tomorrow.
Oh, did it change?
I haven't seen anything.
I signed up for it, and I thought I put it in my calendars Thursday. Um, and then I believe the meeting in Winewski is the next week, like after we've met. So, um, timing wise, not ideal for us, but I'm gonna double check those. I signed up for both. So I'm hopefully gonna hop on the webinar Thursday, and then I signed up for the evening thing as well.
So this is all about the healthcare decision and how to interpret it. Okay. Anything else? Testing, local and state head updates? Pat, do you have anything?
Um, nothing locally from the select board. Uh, I was asked, the Hiwatha PTO is, you may have seen it floating around on social media as well. They've put together a series of, they call it conform and inspire speakers. Um, yeah, it's actually really pretty fantastic. They have four speak, or four speaking engagements lined up over the next four months. Uh, the first one is this Thursday, um, healthy affordable food security. Um, I have a dietitian, someone from Hunger Fever Mont, uh, food security specialist will be there to do presentations. The end of January, uh, raising inclusive kids, uh, a clinical psychologist, uh, Dr. Marissa Coleman will be there. Uh, March twenty fifth, raising inclusive kids, uh, parents toolkit for LGBTQIA plus issues. Uh, and finally, in April, uh, trauma informed parents, um, they'll have someone from the Howard Center. Uh, looks like their school services supervisor will be there to talk to them. So, uh, pretty impressive. I'm hurt by the PTO, the lineup all for those people. But I think they're really interesting. I'll try to remind the board as they're, the first one is this Thursday, so.
Are they doing sort of cross pollination to sh, like will other schools' families be made aware?
Um, I know that they're trying to push out as hard as they can on social media, and they sent this to me to try to put out to as many people as they can. So I know it's on Essex VT, but I don't know if they have the connections to go between schools. So I guess I can talk to Ben, maybe see if he has a way of distributing, yeah.
Facebook EWSD, because somewhere I saw that and put it down.
Like the other PTOs, if they are willing to have.
Well, if they're on.
So the other thing that's coming up is that in Westford, they're starting a book read, I think for seventh and eighth graders, um, with the, from Reed's book this year is called The Hate U Give. And the kickoff for that is Friday, this Friday night. And Erin McGuire is gonna be in Westford with that film called I Am From Here that Beth O'Brien did. Some of us saw it at the SBA, not this fall, but the fall before. So I'm sure that's open to anybody who might be interested. I think it's seven o'clock at the Westford School. Okay, um, also, under our state cred update, I sent our list of topics to all the legislators who were not here for our legislative forum. And Tim Ash got back to me and asked for the specific language that we need around election of school board members. So I have sent that to him. Dylan has talked to, um, his chair, you know, the, um, the education committee. So we'll have to keep close track of that. Anything else, Kim?
Not that I can think of. We will have Phil Beruth at the VSA board meeting tomorrow night. He's joining us, Phil Beruth.
Oh, good.
I can't remember if Kate Webb is able to be there or not, but, um,
There's a good.
Kickoff to the season.
There's a good article in Digger today talking about how they hope not to be doing a lot of new initiatives this year. And, um, the House is gonna work on pre-K, and the Senate's gonna work on, mm-hmm. Oh, I have special, the, the, yeah, Act one seventy-three, yeah. I will say, I started reading the waiting study. Brian, have you read it?
I have not gotten into it yet.
Yeah. If I'm reading it right, it is framing for our district. So I think it's gonna be really important that we get on top of it soon.
Erin's read it.
And we start trying to think about strategies and maybe working with other communities that are.
I went to a presentation by the researchers that put together the report, delivered it, and they, they made a really strong point, and I think they'll make it with the legislature, is that this is a waiting study that would be part of a funding model. And the funding model that Vermont uses is very unique. As is.
Everything else.
As is everything else. So it doesn't follow, so the waiting study is not an, if the waiting study doesn't just, just go in, it really is the beginning of what monies become block grants, which monies become subject to this, how does an overall funding model work? So there's more that's gonna happen in this process, hopefully.
I sure hope so.
She is.
Okay.
She is presenting that a number of places and ways, in addition to having provided it, I think, to the legislature. But it's been discussed, she presented to the advisory group, looking at the rules for Act one seventy-three, the block grant number. Opens more questions, it sounded from that group I was listening in on Monday, than answers. But the concern is that the knee jerk reaction be done in isolation with respect to the block grant versus its broader impact. And it sounded like, like, was it Janet Ansel who was suggesting that they were not likely to imagine there to be major funding changes, funding formula changes happening this year? And just because I don't know, in an election year, which this will be, is it more or less likely that they? And just because I don't know, in an election year, which this will be, is it more or less likely that they do something? Do you know, Martha?
They, they, they're less likely to do something. Because everybody gets their tax bills just about the time that people are knocking on doors. So, but they might start doing something that's gonna take effect in a future year. But she seemed to be saying, there's a tax structure study coming out, which I wasn't aware of, that looks at the broader range of taxes, and that they wouldn't do anything around education in isolation. Yeah. Okay, anything else? All right, I would ask you to try to fill out a meeting evaluation, but I'm not gonna give you time to do it right now. I would remind you, we have a budget work session next Tuesday. That's when we focus on operations issues. And then the twenty-first is a regular meeting that will have a big budget component that will be focused on instruction. And how, how the entertaining motion that we go into executive session to discuss employee evacuation. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, always in favor saying hi.
Hi.
And we will be by ourselves in the conference room. Thank you, everyone.